Are you ready, Hector? Thank you. So we will call the Talent City Council Study Session of March 5th to order. Roll call please.
Councillor Coley.
Here.
Councillor Pranemirov.
Here.
Councillor Medina is absent. Councillor Basizo.
Here.
Councillor Byers.
Here.
Councillor Para Miller.
Here.
Mayor Eriswad.
Here.
Mayor Gilloquorm.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is Discussion of Historical Town Hall Building Restoration Draft Master Plan. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. That's Delaine, our finance manager. He, uh, this is a little bit of a passion project. Share the, uh, the presentation.
Alright, thank you very much. Good evening. First of all, this is the historic town hall master plan as a living document that will be reviewed on a regular basis. This master plan came to the forefront rather quickly for as a requirement of the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant for the Historic Town Hall. The plan was developed by staff with input from George Kramer, Talents Historic Building Consultant, and members of the Historic Town Hall Work Group. As you may not know, the historic town hall is one of the first public buildings to be erected in the city of talent. It's a large 4,807 square foot wood-framed building located in the heart of downtown. It sits on the northwest corner of East Main and North Market Street. For 125 years, it's had many uses. Originally built as a school and then purchased by the city of talent in 1910. It served the community in so many ways over the years. It was a school, it was government offices, it was a police department, it was a library, it was a polling place, food bank. We helped community events there. It was a rental facility and there were so many other projects. Current issues with the building is we have foundation issues. Wood spurs and downed stalks, such as building stairs. And with the exterior, it's having a disperated structure. Interior needs to be contaminated with fire. The building needs to be repaired. The building needs to be repaved and, quite unfortunately, the last final line is to try to do that. The historic town hall was built in three distinct places. It's an 1899 building, which is a different green. In 1910, it was that in addition, but it should be lifted again blue. In 1954, it isn't. That changes always. It's particularly yellow. The basement, um, will probably show up, shown to be on the ground. Starting with this slide, I will quickly walk through the three structural issues of putting the historic town hall. This is the main, the community that you're in. Notice each one of these little red dots are issues that I'd like to point out here. Number one, uh, we have been properly attached to the style of the building. They will need to do this. Two, we have downed stalks, that means we have to link my building and the foundation and place a plan into its own room. The stairs, very part of the building. Needs to be replaced immediately for us, but if you run a lot of stuff, there's going to be short stuff. It's difficult to do the position. Stairs up to the office on the right side of the building, those may be the first as well. This is an example of the crack in foundation. If you build it very firmly, you can actually put the rock, this wall to the mortar. This is an example of the line. So if I walked over to the town hall that I have already, I could have used the chair step in the plastic vacuum and showed out the view. An example of how curated those stairs were. This is the south side of the building. This is the west side of the building, the 1891 portion of the building. First of all, the dentists are rusted out a little bit. The downed stalk, the round downed stalk is tearing away from the building. See, this building requires immediate exterior maintenance and caulking and needs purring, needs to be installed. Then we had the downed stalks cleaned out this fall. We found that tree roots were impacting the drainage pipes and 300 person pipe feeders. This is a close-up of the concrete that's on the roof. You can really see just how damaged it may be by the heat of this. In the rear of the building, we had a very large insect seed that's been there for about 25 years. A part of the tree trunk of this group of trees, I don't know if it's one tree or two trees, but it began with probably the back. It's kind of.
Three or four. Looks like three or four.
So there's more than that. But yeah, it's impacting the ADA ramp. On this next slide, tree limbs are found under the eaves. Tree limbs are above the roof. And, uh, we had it consulted by District 5 just a few short weeks ago. And we found that the tree should be 10 feet away from the structure for fire prevention. That includes the tips of the branches. And this is an infographic that was provided by Captain David Meads of Jackson County Fire District 5 for Oregon Defensive Space Invest Practices. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to handle the tree from the building. This is a view of the rear side of the building. You can see that the roofing needs to be replaced. And then gutters are tearing away from the building. And if you notice, these gutters don't match the front of the building. These are not period-specific gutters we need to have happen inside of that building. Behind the building is the 1927 edition. It is sitting directly on the ground.
Our completely backed foundation is sitting directly on the ground.
Gutter downed stalks, the gutter downed stalks that terminate next to the building rest right there. It's probably what's happening in wood under it as well. As you can see, the flat, the flat part of the building is a 1954 edition. Notice that it has a cinder block foundation. That foundation appears to be in working order. Um, if you look closely at the building, it has two different types of siding on it, which is really interesting. And I was wondering where the small siding come from? Well, it was, the little, the small siding came from the original 1899 building. Before it was actually added on to the, to the building. Uh, there's a grease trap in the bathroom building that needs to be removed. That was, um, a remnant of the talent lions closed 10 K practice. They have the griddles inside the kitchen and that's where the grease trap lived. On this slide, this is the, right across, this is from across the mortons to looking at the 1954 edition. This is the flat roof. There's a flat membrane roof on the top of that building. Uh, there's dry rot visible on the corner of the building. Two, there's a, like I said, with a flat membrane roof. We learned it's properly installed. And I'll talk about that a little later. Uh, that needs to be immediate replacement. That, well, we talked about it now. We had a, um, kitchen, um, after our sew event. And it came from the improperly installed roof and the lashing. So in the meantime, things were out, we needed to get somebody up there as soon as possible at least with some kind of a caulking around it. So we don't have any further reinsurance to the structure. Number four, uh, these stairs are rotting and need to be replaced, that little, little piece of wood that's gone around. And that's exactly where that piece of wood came from. Um, this is where the proposed ADA lift is going to be installed. And down below is the entrance to the basement. This slide is an image of the 1890, 1899 building as you would enter from the back door. The interior paint will need to be completed after the foundation work is done. We paused that portion of the restoration, the fire restoration process. Because we felt if we went forward spending insurance money to repaint and to fix the plaster then we go underneath and just put the foundation back up, we would have to do it all over again. So we had to put a pause on that. Um, there are numerous settling cracks throughout the building. And after the sew event, more would have become more apparent. Here's an example of settling crack, settling cracks in the plaster. And this is the example of damage to plaster by a former user of the building. This is a view towards the city council base as if you were standing between the 1954 edition and the 1899 portion of the building. In the top corner is a large beam. Um, the ceiling appears to be pulling away. There is a definite, definite sand on the floor on the right side of the building. And there's damage to the paint from carts and chairs. Plaster within this portion of the building is made with either soot or something. And it was quite a special discussion to make sure that. This is a view looking towards the 1954 edition as if you were standing in front of this. This was, I can't imagine, if you're familiar with the, the current building. Behind Talents Bay has four windows. Well, those, this side of the building was exactly the same in 1899. This is where, um, they actually added on to the 1954, um, building. What we found out, they took away the structural element in the middle of that building or the middle of that room. And it's caused that beam to sad, 34 inches. We believe that a new weight bearing wall will solve this problem. Engineering word, a weight bearing. This is the interior of the 1954 edition. Behind those windows is the former kitchen. The large flat top grilles were removed last year and a significant amount of this stuff has failed to. There appears to be issues with the ceiling and flat roof above. Um, underneath, the industrial grade tile is likely asbestos tile from the mid 1950s. This all will need to be encased with plywood sheets and new tile will be carpeted when need to be installed. And those windows that you see there in the back, those are the original windows from the 1899 building. People can tell they're pretty ingenious and they did a really great job inside of it. This is a photo of the floor kitchen within the 1954 edition. There was water leaking from the roof after the sew event, for a few weeks ago. And you can see at the very bottom of this slide is a large plaster piece that fell. Um, I would have the building today with insurance adjusted and, um, and an engineer that was providing an insurance agent involved and another piece of the plastic fell. Uh, there's a natural gas pipe that needs to be removed. And this, this room is where we propose to have two ADA accessible restrooms installed. And three, the splash guard, the glass splash guard, the nose, we're in the pose that those need removed and vital showing. This is a view in the 1924 edition. The floor has significantly sad due to the lack of a foundation beneath this portion of the building. Who are indeed superfluous. I think this is probably going to be the, this cost we have to prepare for the foundation because we don't have one. I think this is going to happen either in a month or two, this portion of the building over time. Rebuild the foundation, cut off the bottom, put it back on and put it back on the roof. That's definitely what will happen to build this cost on that day. Regulatory, regulatory. Really important is that all work will, will comply with the Secretary of the Interior's Guns for Treatment of Historic Properties, including local, state and preservation rules and guidelines. Our building is based on the National Historic Register, which one, let me tell you. That's another thing we need to do, we need to have that. Our restoration gradually will be conducted in a little bit. The first phase is stabilization of the building and critical care. I look at it as to, let's do that foundation solve and let's take that good track. The next step will be safety and accessibility. Those pieces will be replacing the stairs, installing the ADA lift. That was referred to in the 2019 document that was provided by George Kramer, um, I think it was for Tura, uh, security work. Phase three is usable space designing construction. And then phase four landscaping and grounds. This slide shows, it's very tentative, cost estimate. Like all remodel or restoration projects, it always announces surprises. The item that worries me the most at this point in time is the flat roof on the 1954 edition. You can see dry rot to the exterior of the building. I'm the only one who would have tried to activate it without the thought of it is in the building. Recommended use of the building was developed by a member of the town hall restoration group, George Kramer and Steve Stat. Recommended feature use of the building. Will hope to be a medium. Office furniture space, community meeting space and city archives and storage. All four of these will provide revenue for the ongoing operations and maintenance of the building. For all recommended use of the building, each will provide revenue for the maintenance of the building. Each recommended use will provide revenue source for the operations and maintenance of the building. For the past several years, this building generated little to no revenue while experiencing maintenance and repair costs. Plans are in the works to make this building financially sustainable. If you can see right now, the, on the graphic, the 1899 schoolhouse in 1927 edition proposed to be in the museum archives. Be yellow, um, on the left hand side, that is the existing office. And we would like to put, with a dividing wall between the 1899 schoolhouse and 1954 edition. Have shared meeting space for the community. Uh, one of the thoughts was, you know, there was a meeting, uh, just last week regarding, it's last week or two weeks, uh, regarding the museum center. This, this could be a wonderful, wonderful issue if they can't find a place at, uh, within the next couple of years to have classes with FEDC or whatever maybe. If we, if we can finish it quick enough, we're making it have that ability, opportunity. Also, uh, where the kitchen was is the ADA, proposed ADA restrooms. And, um, in the basement, the city is in much needed, uh, storage space and archives. We are currently running a container right here in the back of the community center. And, uh, we'd like to give it a look. Possible economic benefits of the restoration project. Cultural tourism. That's a definitely a benefit. Local economy. Hospital operation, the museum is in there, you don't need museum staff, you don't need, um, janitorial ma- maintenance, uh, and such. And having this building restored with definitely enhanced quality. This one, this is, this is my one, this is the, uh, recommended floor plan. Would you like me to go through all the pieces and parts on this or would you like to just keep them all in the study and ask any questions? I think it'd be really nice to be walked through it. Okay. Let's start with, um, I know this is kind of colorful. Let's start with the museum. Um, there's been discussion. Um, there's been two, they used to be coat closets for the elementary school back in 25 years. Where they will turn it into restaurants for the boys and girls. There's been discussion for moving, um, putting in there and having those as square closets for, uh, putting, uh, archives in there and stuff. There has been discussion with, uh, walling it off between the shared meeting space and museum. There, right now there are different, uh, ideas. Um, there's ideas where they could put a glass, um, wall between the shared viewing space and museums. So people who are sitting in the shared meeting space can actually enjoy the museum at the same time. Or there's another thought, they're actually just going ahead and wall off with sheet rock. And then make it period appropriate, like maybe putting wings, wings coating and such. The 1927 edition of that, uh, that would be accessible to the museum archives. That yellow line across there is, we'd like to put in a wall there. It does allow people who visit the museum to have access to the ADA restrooms for the proposed construction portion of the building. Um, ADA restrooms will be accessible to the shared meeting space. The shared meeting space will be accessible by the ADA group. We, uh, there's also going to be updates in safe stairs for people who can go into the building. The office in front of the building, we're proposing to put a rotating path back in there so that it would not impact the users of that space. Having to run around to the other side of the building, they walk up the stairs and use the restrooms that are in back of the building. It's, we'll make it kind of contained for the office space. The stairs. The stairs leading down to the basement, we're proposing to remove them. And that's where the, uh, entrance for the city archives will be from down below on Market Street side of the building. In addition, we're proposing three handicap spaces in the back of the building to accommodate um, those people who are unable to walk through the front stairs or the necessary part of the building. On the very back of the building, um, between the 1927 edition and the 1899 where the trees are located. Um, we're proposing removing the ADA ramp that's there. And building steps very similar in nature to the very front of the building. And building steps very similar in nature to the very front of the building. And that way it's just, we could give it a better quote than what it is now. Cause I don't know if you've ever walked up the mountain and it's kind of saying the route around to get over the building itself. Any questions on the recommended floor?
Um are we still, well, are we anticipating that council and committee meetings and stuff will take place in there again or no?
Right now, the movement is the possibility, if the former society may needs that building is to take the library and actually that into council chamber. There's discussion on that. There's there's other ideas for location.
Okay. I'm just wondering, cause on occasion, we've had really big turnouts for council meetings. And I'm not familiar with how big that other building is.
That's a fairly sizable. It's in a, it's probably very similar in nature to the museum and the shared meeting space. And we have, we kind of have uh an engineer taking a look at that building. I know that right now with the library and with the old library, there is a post in the middle of that, that the life actually, it's a little museum. If we do have that in the lunch chamber, we're going to have to engineer something to remove that.
Council buyers?
Um sorry, it's a layered question. Okay, um first, this is really cool. Um I'm, I'm wondering with the grant that we've received for renovations, if there are specific requirements for the use of the building after renovation?
No.
So then my next question is, and I say this as a museum lover, it is what I visit everywhere I go. Um so I don't mean this to sound critical of the idea to add to the museum and how it's already one already. Um I'm wondering if there's been any sort of market study about how much revenue a museum of a similar size and the community of a similar size and rural nature generates?
It has not, that is a common discussion.
And then my next question after that, they're all related, sorry. Um has there been any sort of like larger outreach or community engagement about questions about how our community sees this space best serving them?
Actually, I would like, I would have preferred to have this master plan done, you know, on such a.
Yeah, understanding that, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I think it would definitely benefit the community that to have more input on this. Um the best we could do at this point in time is having the, the town hall restoration work group providing with, George will be able to provide. I, now the problem is with the master plan that is required, will be ordered in names through restorative revitalization, correct?
Totally, and well, and it's a written document, so I'm wondering how much that could evolve with community part?
Yes, and I, I, the next slide. Um actually, it's a question I wanted to, the one thing we would like to do is we would like to forward this document to the architectural union for any of their future uh art architectural uh.
Along that.
Yeah, they're defined off. And a written document is how I view it, because there are some things in there that I will not see in this document in the next year. But the uh, the budget, we can estimate the budget, that will need to come out in a couple of days. And a lot of that, the, the, how to be go through and restore.
I have a couple of questions as well. Along uh similar lines, um I, I, I'm challenged by this, what I think is going to be kind of uh a conundrum of having to, you know, the fox in the hay or the fox in the feed and the uh chicken, moving things around in a, in a way that makes all the timing right. So if um, if we go to adopt plans that have the museum built in, I, I, I do appreciate the comment you made, I also appreciate a comment a former staff made, a member made that um one of the things we'll want to find out is the, the sustainability of the museum. And so if we're adopting plans for this to be a museum, then it really sort of fixes the fact that the chambers have to go into that space, which you know I support. Um I think that's a great space for it. But it does, it does make me wonder, should we be looking at these two projects financially at the same time? Because you can't get us out of there and get them in, you know, you, you get what I'm saying, right? Yeah.
As far as use of interior layout, I don't see this happening within the year. I set up a little on phase one and the possible portion of phase two. There's, there's been a lot more thought and discussion with the historical side, historical side. They have not seen this. This is something, um I know that it's been a wish list, it's best, um that they would want to build in that building. But it's very important that we, we know that they could easily need for it. Because it is valuable for this space. And if the museum, if it is not working, then we would have to do the correction and figure out what is the best use of that space. One important thing to remember is that this is, we don't want a lot of traffic. Not one who's the, a hundred people at a time is, it's an older building that needs to be handled with respect.
Agreed, and I mean, I think we saw a lot of challenges because of some of the stuff you described, but I, so the next question, I mean, I, what I want to do is, is point this stuff out because I think there's going to be an order of business that we need to, that we need to look at this from. And so if the museum, for example, didn't go in, then we'd still be looking at where are the council chambers and um, yeah, could be there. Um and if we can get the right sound system and all of that kind of stuff in place. So I do hope to ask the group that's working on this to, to take a global view of like how this is going to move everybody around and what is going to be the best plan or order of business uh to make sure that we, we get funding for the council chambers as well if there is a big change of spa- use, space use.
Having difference, let's say, let's say for instance, the museum is not people in it. Maybe it might be something along the lines of the um seniors. I mean, we have to be open to use of the, or the most important thing about this building is restoring. Finding the appropriate grants to pay for that because uh we don't have any stream. Um the next step, one, I'm probably about jumping into slide ready. Um we need a whole revenue plan, and we ultimately have to have a good plan to memorialize those revenues going directly into a fund that is specific to the music, so we can't build a general fund for um buying and trucking.
Understood, um so at, at, at some future time, if this group can take up that, that question, I hope, uh to hear back and just how are we going to move all these pieces around and what are the different options of moving those pieces around in terms of, again, doing things in the right timing?
Exactly, it's very dominant.
No doubt, that's perfectly described, yeah, dominoes, that's it.
It's, you know, the thought of this, this building, every day something new comes to mind, you know, uh we thought about it. About talking about, and maybe not having council again, the light, then maybe the library, having council achieve those features using the old library as a reference. Maybe there's so many options we need to do with things from a high level, the best use of the town.
Gotcha. Councilor Colay?
Yeah, I just had a couple, couple of questions and comments, um. This is exciting, I, I really appreciate it, it's fun to think about. Uh my first question is, is it, it seems to me that these upgrades and, you know, the floor plan specifically isn't necessarily like contingent and hanging on the museum, whether or not the museum's going to go in there. It seems like you could do all these um improvements to this building and, you know, build the wall, create a separate shared meeting space. And do all that without having to decide like what exact tenant is, is going in there, am I correct in that?
You are.
And is the funding contingent on like the use of the building or is it just?
It is not at this point in time. Um the one, having, let's say for instance, the museum does, going to open stuff halfway for additional grant funding. Um they'll be able to maybe do grants for upgrading their uh this slightly, it's more having, instead of having a luxury rental power that we fight, if we would, they prefer even have carpet here. Possibility, there's a lot of possibility.
Lot of cool possibilities, right? My other comment um slash question is, has the tree or candelabra tree been assessed by an arborist?
Yes.
Okay, what was their recommendation? They say remove it, prune it?
No, we, we talked about pruning it, but I also reached out and replied with your five. I think from a different point, for as far as that, I would.
I would, I would advocate personally to keep it and prune it and do that type of maintenance, but that's just me. And I know where the five district's going to come from on, on their side.
I totally understand your point of view without a doubt. However, concern would be, what are the roots going to the foundation of that? That's another concern.
Definitely.
I would hope that we, that some of those questions would go through the forestry committee for review as well. I have another question, uh but council, number a few first.
Sure, I just want to make sure I understood what this is inappropriate for is dance hall, sounded like.
It's not more, more fully.
Because even after the restoration, there's, it's still delicate, the floor?
Absolutely, um with, before the plaster walls, that's, that means we have to go through with the plaster wall. I didn't know that, so. And I didn't know it very good, how it did, special techniques for plaster wall.
So we are, so we are limited um in the kinds of uses.
We need, we need to find the tenants that are good stewards of the building, that seems important in defining.
And I just want to last say, this is gorgeous, but those trees are pretty close to the building.
I like it, it looks great.
I like it too.
Perfect.
I have another question, um and this is on materials you have covered already, so um you have a restoration strategy, phase one through phase four, this is really helpful. Um so we, we, we asked for Osland to come in and do this assessment. We, I think we approved a contract for that, is that correct? And then, and then from this assessment, and it looks like they have an estimated budget, will we be putting out a separate RFP for the, for the work, for the construction?
They will actually be as part of their, for their, not construction, their focus is only on the foundation. So let's see the pieces and parts that they were in, um who are in the ADA and them. We're going to get three quotes, we want to be in a call with that. Um staff have already gathered estimates, we've got least for roofing estimates, we've got sales out estimates. We have estimates for repairing the stairs, replacing the stairs. Um a lot of the stuff is going to be discussed.
So if I can ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Alex, you want to add to that?
Perhaps, I, we, we don't know what the first funding source is going to be. Yeah, right, we're hopeful that it's state dollars, but there may be a funding source that requires us to redo some of those procurements. So I, I think it, it would be great if uh, or the, the awesome procurement specifically. So I just want to caution that we don't, we don't know, since we don't know the funding source, we don't yet know exactly who we're going, would be able to.
Um yes, and so uh that helps, that's, that clears it up a little bit more for me as well. Um but um it seems to me like one of the biggest expenses is going to be the foundation.
That's what I'm learning, however, I still, we um met with an engineer, um provided by insurance company, who was, I was concerned about the snowbank on the floor. Me, we went underneath the building and um I learned this from Doc, who was, who was with the engineer, um scoring, me felt that if the foundation wasn't that bad, I think the problem was that it was kind of thin. Um the biggest issues are where they remove the weight bearing wall between the main and the four inch and the nine inch. What happened is you take that, enter the piece out. It originally had three places that supported that wall. Take that original piece out, then you take the entire weight and you're putting it onto two posts. Well, that's where the most problems are with the building, the weight between the two warehouses.
That makes sense.
Felt how we learned, somebody, I think it was way before the last restoration, twenty five years ago, weaved up the foundation underneath that four hundred pound belt out.
Smart, yeah, so if I could just get back to um really, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is it sounds to me like we have obligated the city to have a contract with Osland for the foundation. When did that happen, did we do that?
Yes.
For the foundation piece? Oh, I thought, I thought we just approved the, the, the evaluation. Can, can you look into that?
Yes.
Because I do think that it does seem like a, a, a separate RFP for the foundation piece. It would be good to, to get competing bids based on, based on the, based on the financials that I saw.
They vote you.
Yeah, okay, great, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you. Any other questions? All right, go for it.
Long term plan of future renovation, um we need to create a facility maintenance for the plan that's currently in the works. Um rental revenue is going to be dedicated for the operation and maintenance of the building, that's really important. Um and then with the facility and maintenance, I would really like to see that adopted and memorialized by the city council. So those of us who are no longer here, five and fifteen years down, down the road, it's like a down shout, we can have that over.
Yeah, good.
Um grant opportunity developed currently, um we're scrambling on the Oregon Main Street revitalization grant. I'm hoping to get that out, get to work on fighting, we're still missing a few pieces. Um the Preserving Oregon Grant, that's going to be due in a few short weeks, but we're going to be going after that as well. There's T-Mobile Main Street Grant that's offered quarterly, we're going to be looking at that. The Kinsman Foundation is another one that we're going to keep that at as well. And there's other one, there's another grant opportunity down there. The important thing that I'm seeing is that we need to be on top of the opportunities this year and now because we don't know the impact of what part of the world is doing, um as far as moving minds to the same asset. We have to, we have this for. Um the next steps. Um we want to, with your, your permission to submit the master plan, we want to make submit the master plan with the Oregon Main Street provided, the revitalization, we have application by order this week. Um we'd like to forward the master plan, the architecture review, maybe for true design input. Um the next step to that is we need to start creating a fundraising plan. Um I've reached out to the organization of Portland, and I mean, it's we need to continue seeking right opportunities and we need to finish creating our facility standard plan. And when I talk about the facility name, it's kind of, I'm not looking at one here, I want to look at something that sparks for the years. Something that identifies, you know, you know that you have to repair that, replace that roof, the roof in three years, you want me to just setting money aside now, or does it become, maybe it survives three years later?
Alex?
Yeah, if I could just contribute a couple of things that occurred to me as, as, as Tess was talking, what, what is that? Um for sure, a lot of really good questions today. Um and um my understanding is that master plan has no legal meaning outside of in some context with system development charges, right? It, there's, there's a specifics uh meaning of master plan. We're not asking you, I just want to be clear, we're not asking you for a formal adoption. We're not trying to make this into something it's not. Um but, and I think the, the suggestions and the questions about what's the additional outreach and, and Community involvement beyond architectural review committee is something that we need to spend some time thinking about and and bring back for you all to bless informally.
Yeah, let's, we. I I don't think we're expecting to see this come before us anytime soon and we do see the props, we see the long range process and I appreciate, I appreciate those comments. I I I also really value your input about. The community process and and those kinds of things as we move forward. And taking these opportunities now while we have time to really look at how do we position everything when it does come to, when it comes to that time. When we are making adoptions. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we will. Adjourn this meeting at. Six forty five.